Good morning, everyone. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure your cellphones are on the vibrate position or they're turned off. And also, please be advised that our city council meetings are broadcast on Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube, and rebroadcast on WMGJ. This meeting of the Gaston City Council now comes to order. The chair will call on our acting city clerk, Jennifer Smith, for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Coming.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Shane Ellison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
If we could just take a brief moment of silence in honor of Mr. Bob Echols. Father, we are thankful for the day that you've given us. We're thankful for so many things, Lord, that we're blessed with that we don't even consider each day. We do pray specifically today for the family of Mr. Bob Echols, Ms. Batty specifically, just, Lord, comfort her and the rest of the family during this time. And we give thanks for Mr. Echols, the life he lived, the example he gave to all of us, especially to this administration and this council, Lord, and for the support that he always gave us. Lord, we just pray that you bless us with more like him, that put the city's interests above their own, even above their district at times. And, Lord, again, we just do pray for that whole family. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to serve and just for all the people in attendance today. Lord, give this council and administration wisdom as they make decisions hopefully pleasing to you and benefiting our city and our state. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on November 20th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of the account for the week of November the 16th through the 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation. We have two items. The first one is the ordering of abatement of nuisance on property at 1008 Slushes Street in District 2, Thomas Martin and American General Finance being the last known owners. This resolution was tabled for seven days on November the 20th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, taking into account both the level of the complaints regarding this property, as well as some feedback that we recently received from the property owner, we're gonna allow the business, I'm gonna ask that we table this for seven days, seven additional days, to allow the business, building department to have a conversation with the property owner regarding a redevelopment plan. And once we get some level of comfort from the building department, we may proceed with allowing the property owner to bring this piece of property up to code. So I'm asking for, my motion is for an additional seven-day table.
Are there any discussion?
Need a second.
Second.
I'll second that.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is the gentleman doing anything with the property now? Is he working on, is he trying to bring it up? Or can you bring us up to speak what he's doing now?
Over the next seven days, we'll get that level of feedback. I think there's a meeting scheduled between he and Mr. Harbison.
Has he done anything since we gave another additional seven days on the 20th?
I'm not certain about that. I don't think so.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for seven days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries to table the resolution for seven days.
B, assessing a nuisance abatement being for demolition on property at 2911 Harper Street in District 6. This is Shoney R. Bankston and Carol Rosie Chapman being the last known owners, and the amount is $1,940.88. And this resolution was tabled for 14 days on November the 13th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
We just never got this worked out with the building department. They was here that day, and they never got it worked out. So I just go ahead and made that motion to go forward with it.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to, or in favor of, an ordinance rezoning property located adjacent to 233 Heinz Road from an R1, one-family resident district to B2 general business district. The owners are Brian and Sydney, and I pronounced your last name?
Nagashima.
Nagashima, have requested the rezoning to allow for commercial use of a muscadine vineyard located on the property. The planning commission has held two public hearings and by a voter four to one with one abstention, recommended approval of the rezoning. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? If you'll state your name and your address.
My name is Tommy Wright. I live at 2018 Lookout Street. And I have spoke to both of the prior meetings, at both of the prior meetings, and my reasoning is the same here as it was for those. I feel like the changing of this will devalue my property value and my neighbor's property value. Lookout Street is pedestrian and highly, a lot of pedestrian and bicycle traffic because of scenic pool, and I feel like the change in this will cause additional traffic in this area, which will be a safety concern for neighborhood kids. The property in question has several things that they want to do other than just the vineyard. They want to do a wedding venue and also summer rental, cabin rentals at some time. I feel like the City of Gaston has these opportunities, both of these opportunities within a block of this area. So I don't see as we need that in this area. The wedding venue part of it, I don't think there's enough property there to do what they wanna do, unless it's a mighty small wedding. You're gonna have to have parking and sewer facilities and such as that. They brought a lot of people forward in these past meetings in favor of this. However, most of those people did not live adjacent to it. I virtually am 100 feet away from where this property is when I look out my back window. I'm 100 feet from where this property joins. I own half a lot, seven. Of course, we don't have them out here today. But anyway, I've got a good bit of frontage against this, against this property. And that's my reasons that I'd like to see it left R1. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in opposition?
Madam President, I would like to say it's in my district, and as unpleasant it is, I know these people have done a lot of work. Of course, they didn't check before they did this on the zoning blocks. We do have an ordinance against it. My main concern, citywide, every one of us, is that if we okay a B2, heavy duty, that includes garages and so on and so forth, heavy duty on this particular property, or any other, that it'll set a precedent in this city that they can go into any district here and do the same thing. I don't think anybody in your district wants a service station or a motorcycle garage, and I'm not being melodramatic about it. I'm trying to emphasize the point that it's heavy duty going into an R1. At this time, I would, and the precedent is what worries, I say it again. I would like to ask Tina Cody from the zoning department to come by, come up and kinda go over our city ordinance, so you have a pretty good understanding of what you're talking about, going from residential one to heavy-duty B2. Tina, if you would, please.
Ms. President, while she's coming up here, I want along for the record, make the record note that the gentleman that lives on Lookout Street, that this property joins to, he isn't against this rezoning. I've got it on my phone, we sent a text message this morning, said he couldn't be here. But I'd just like the records to show that, please.
Good morning. There are certain criteria for any rezoning.
Is your mic on?
I think so. I'm just short. This falls under Section 130, 101, and is an amendment to that ordinance. Reasons for amendments. This chapter, including the zoning map, is based on comprehensive planning studies and is intended to carry out the objective of a sound, stable, and desirable environment. It is recognized that casual amendment of this chapter would be detrimental to the achievement of that objective. It is the public achievement, I'm sorry, it is the public policy to amend this chapter only when one or more of the following conditions prevail. The first one is an error, and that would be an error on the city's part in the current zoning. The second one is change in conditions. That would be if, this is a predominantly residential area, and there are no businesses adjacent to you or reasonably close. That would mean for a change in condition, most of the residences would have to be abandoned, or people would have to be moving out and not using it as residential purposes. Then you could consider having a change in the use as is. And then the third one is annexation, which doesn't apply in this case. It's already in the city. What we have here, when you are requesting a freestanding change in zoning, which this is, because it is surrounded, it is all residential R1, so they're requesting a change to a freestanding B2 district, which requires four acres. They do have that acreage, but again, you're moving a B2 general business district into a residential area. So two years from now, if one of the neighbors wanted to request a rezon to B2, they could do so, and then it would just expand the B2 again in this residential district.
Tina, Councilman Reed spoke to precedent. Is there any precedent relative to this, moving from R1 to B2?
The last freestanding B2 that I can think of that was approved, just off the top of my head, was on East Broad Street. But there you have other B2, B3, B1. So they were able to get enough property owners involved in the rezoning request so that they could attach to an existing B2. Since then, there have been a couple of requests on Highway 411 in your district for a B2, and that was not approved. They ended up going with B1. We had a request on Rainbow Drive, where there is a lot of commercial already existing. I think it was B1, they wanted to go to B2. That was not approved, because it was so close to the Clubview area. So I'm not gonna say there's a precedence to establish a freestanding B2. It's just my opinion, but there's not one.
Yeah, but even in that one instance, there was a pretty compelling business case, because there were enough existing B2 properties to make it meaningful.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Ms. Cody, may I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Sorry? In this packet, there's an amendment here that provides some restrictions on what could take place at this property. I'm assuming that that's language that came from the zoning?
Are you referring to the?
In the event that the property is owned B2 by the City of Gaston, then the property may never be used for any use authorized in a B2 zone that would not be authorized in a B1 zone, except for the following: a wedding, meeting, and special events venue, wholesaling of products of a vineyard, orchard, or similar agricultural output. A violation of this restriction may be enforced by the owner of any other parcel of land subject to this restriction by any means authorized by law, including in conjunction.
That was actually provided by Mr. Hudson, the Nagashima's attorney. The original request and what the planning commission actually, why they recommended approval, they had asked for a deed restriction on the property, to have the city acquire a portion of the property, so that they would be joint owner, and then place restrictions on it, so that the use will be limited to strictly what they want to do. So that was provided by them.
Is that something that you believe is enforceable by the city? To restrict a B2 zoning to specific acts that would prevent this precedent that we're talking about, where we specifically say what can happen in that B2 property?
Well, approving it with that deed restriction in and of itself is a precedent. We've never rezoned anything with deed restrictions, and certainly not where the city takes on a portion of the property. My issue with that is that 10 years from now, when I'm not here anymore, the next zoning administrator is not gonna go check the city, I'm sorry, the county tax rolls for deed restrictions. That's a concern we maintain in our office. So it would be very hard to enforce that.
Well, and I certainly understand that. My maiden concern is also 10 years down the road. As we continue to invest heavily in the Nakaluna Falls Park area, I think it's only logical to assume that more economic development and business growth is gonna happen in and around that area. And given the unique nature of this property, just at the edge of an R1 residential district that is pretty rural on the other side of the property, and we just approved the plans for a new trail system that runs within 50 feet of this property, city-owned trail system, I'm not advocating in favor of this project. I'm more concerned about the fact that the city is making economic investments into a city-owned property and then voting down economic development initiatives that are popping up around those investments, and it kinda defeats the purpose, I think, of those economic development efforts if we are landlocked, where we won't allow any additional economic development to happen around the area. It's a challenge, I think, that we need to address on a broader, on a broader scale, not necessarily specifically with this project. Thank you.
Jason, don't you kinda, don't you live up in the turntime section up in there?
I do.
If this here passed, would you want a service station next to your house? They could do something like this up close to your house.
Well, again, if we're gonna compare apples to apples, assuming, and that's why I asked Ms. Cody, the question of can we actually restrict what can happen in these instances, so that we're not talking about a motorcycle shop or a service station? If you're asking me if I think a nice vineyard slash wedding event venue space would be nice on Turntime Avenue, yeah, I do.
But this could, this could turn into a small, little store I used to have in Alabama City. When I grew up in Alabama City, there was a little store on every corner.
Sure.
And they finally got shut of that right there, and we got this ordinances in places, you know, and I just, I might be, and we just need to let, you know, somebody else fight this one out.
And I understand that. Again, I just, I just wanted to draw to the larger point of if we're gonna make investments into areas that are surrounded by residential, you know, community, this won't be the last time we address one of these issues. And I just hate, and I echo Councilman Reed's comments. The only public criticism I would give of the Nagashimas is that you did all this work before approaching the city with this project. I understand your logic, why you did it the way you did, but I wish, I wish we understood, we all had a better understanding of how the process works, so that we could avoid unfortunate situations like this. But I do think on a larger scale, it's something this council's gonna have to be aware of as we move forward, and that economic development does continue to progress.
I think smarter minds than mine have set up R1, B1, B2, light business, that sort of thing. All of the things, structures, enforce are to protect those zones and put them in the places they're supposed to be, based on history, based on future planning, which the City of Gaston has plans for, Nakaluna Falls. And there's a lot of room of that, a lot of acreage.
Sure.
But mine comes down to, and I'll say again, strictly precedent, and we do have an ordinance.
Can I ask a question? You did say that planning commission voted for it or against it?
Four to one.
Four to one, far?
Let me say this.
With the restrictions in there, but the city doesn't have that precedence to do that. What Tina is saying, that 10 years down the road, you know, there's nobody gonna check the records to see about a deed restriction. And before, my thing, it has nothing to do with businesses. My issue has always been the rezoning. That's what we're looking at, the rezoning. And everybody, even that's sitting in this room, even citizens, thinking of rezoning from R1 to a B2, I've always objected to that. And I know that the other councilmen have always talked about the business end, but everybody that's in this room, that's sitting up here, should think about, you know, the rezoning. You're in a neighborhood, and when they rezone to a business district and B2, anything, they're talking about stores, but anything can go in a B2. That's been, you know, I have nothing against what's being planned, what's being done, but I just have a problem with us starting to start taking our residents and rezoning them from residence to I1, B1, and making a business out of it. So, you know, that's my objection to it. It's the rezoning, not the business end.
And Madam President, I just wanna say that I concur with you 100%. I understand the dangers that you, the Pandora's Box that you can open there. But again, I'll just say, this city looks dramatically different than it looked 30 years ago, when a lot of these zonings were put in place. And if we're gonna continue to evolve as a community, we have to recognize that at some point, it's gonna require revisiting of some of these zonings. And I think it's something that, as Councilman Reed said, smarter people than me can figure out, but we need to put some resources to it, I think.
Are there any other oppositions? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Yes, sir.
Your name and?
My name is William Hudson. Actually, live in Glencoe, but I'm an attorney, and I represent the Nagashimas. I've represented them all the way through this. And a lot of the issues that have been brought up here today were addressed at the planning commission, and the planning commission voted four to one to approve this. They tabled it once, so that I could work with your city attorney on this restriction issue, and whether or not it would be enforceable. We worked that out, and the commission, the planning commission voted in favor of this rezoning. The precedent issue that Councilman Reed mentioned, I'd like to address in this regard. This is a nine-acre piece of property located at the very end of the residential development in this area. Past this property, there's a total of five houses in several miles of road. The postman won't even go down there and deliver the mail, because it's so few residences in such a big area. The mailboxes are all set in front of the Nagashima's house. Those people have to come to their house to collect their mail, because postmen won't even take the mail down there. That's how isolated and rural this part of this land is. And right across the street from this is the city's trail area that goes with Nakaluna Falls. And I saw earlier a map of this new proposed trailhead, and it literally, if you look at that map, here's Heinz Road, here's the trail, right there is what we're talking And I also understand there was some problem with, or question about, that the new trailhead in that, parking was an issue there. And it was brought up that maybe the city ought to invest in a parking lot for that area to prevent home-road parking. And I've discussed this with the Nagashimas, and they're perfectly willing to sit down with the city and discuss joint use of the parking lot they would build to serve their venue, which is, again, literally right across the street from your trailhead. And the concern about increased traffic, you just increased the traffic on Heinz Road a whole bunch when you put the new trailhead there. So I don't think this is gonna cause a whole lot more of that. I just, I understand everybody's concern with precedent, but I don't, I think this is a unique situation that doesn't really bring the issue of precedence to bear in this particular case. A great deal of this property, just past the Nagashimas, is in a trust and can never be developed for anything. It's in the wildlife trust. It's gonna stay a forest forever. So, and the, all this, the stuff about the garage and the motorcycle shop and all this sort of thing, that was what was brought up at the planning commission, and that was what we addressed with the city attorney in the restrictions. And the, since that I've done a little more research on that, and there's actually Alabama cases that say that if this restriction exists, then the adjoining property owners to this can enforce those restrictions, even though they aren't specifically a party to those restrictions. So I think that addresses the concern of what's gonna happen 10 years down the road when the zoning lady isn't here anymore, and nobody remembers this restriction? Well, the property owner that's right next to it, that doesn't want his garage next to his property, he'll remember that restriction. And I actually found an Alabama case that says he can enforce that restriction. So I actually feel like we've done a good job of addressing all the concerns that have been raised in getting to this point. And on behalf of the Nagashimas, I would like to urge the council to vote in favor of further advancement for the city on the mountain and in the Nakaluna Falls area, and to approve this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if you're gonna put the attorney on top of the bus instead of under the bus, how would the city enforce the restrictions that were drawn up?
I didn't do it, did I?
You didn't say that.
Before he does start, I'd like to say one thing that Mr. Hudson brought up about the precedent of being closed. He was talking about property all the way down Heinz Road. That's not what we're addressing. People down Heinz Road don't have anything to do with this, except going through the traffic. We're talking about people on Lookout Circle that are bused. We're talking about people on Lookout Avenue, right next to it, Lookout Street. We're talking about going from R1 to B2, possibly down the line into the R1 second. So it's not down the road, it's right there adjacent to it. Go ahead.
All right, let me go ahead and clear this up. In the planning commission, there was a question of whether if they approved or recommended rezoning to B2, could the property owners restrict this property so that it could only be used for certain purposes, and not the broad range of what a B2 is allowed? And what Mr. Hudson and I discussed is there's two ways in my mind to do that. One is called revertor D, and that doesn't apply here, because it'd be the same owner, same owner in both instances, from one hand to the-
same owner in both instances from one hand to the other. The other is a subdivision. And typically in a subdivision, when you go, when an individual subdivides 30 lots, and he puts restrictions on those lots. For example, the restrictions can be like you have to have a 1,500 square foot house, or that they have to maintain a picket fence around the yard, or whatever. And when everybody buys into that subdivision, they have it on their deed, these restrictions. And those restrictions apply equally. And if someone violates, if an owner says, "I want to build a five, a tiny house," then the other property owners have a right to go and say, "No, you can't. There's a restriction against that." And that's what a concept of Mr. Hudson came up with, except it would be a situation where he would, where his client would deed the property, most of the property, to an LLC on which he's going to develop his land with, and a sliver of that property he would deed to the city. And the restriction on both deeds was that the properties cannot be used for all these other purposes under B2. Now, the question I was asked is, can that restriction be valid? My answer is yes. And I did not expound any farther. I did not expound on whether this, you know, what the presence this would set. You know, I didn't expand on, you know, what would be the rational basis for us creating a spot zoning situation, essentially. My opinion stopped short there. You know, and this morning, Mr. Hudson came in and he showed me, he's got some cases. I haven't had a chance to look at them. He told me that they might suggest that he could impose restrictions on these, on the property, and also that adjacent property owners can enforce the restrictions outside of what we were thinking about subdivision. But he also told me that these cases were not, was not on all fours, and I haven't had a chance to read them. Any questions, Councilman Wether?
Well, your opinion is yes, you can enforce it, right?
Enforce what?
The city.
The city.
Well, my opinion is this, if he did the subdivision, and it's a quasi-subdivision, it's not recorded in what we usually do, it's quasi, so it's not, it's not essentially a recorded subdivision. And so it would be language that in his deed and the deed to the city. And it would be, and we would record the deed. But whether future property owners, I mean, typically someone's going to look at a plat book to see what the subdivision regs are, and there's not going to be one. Somebody who down the road is going to have forethought to look up and see, find Gadsden's deed. Or somebody here at the city is going to have to remember to look at amongst, how many deeds do we have, General?
Lots.
You know, so I mean, that just creates a real world issue.
Is there a way to red flag the deed restriction when somebody does a title search for this property? Or are they going to have to hunt for it?
Well, they'll have to hunt.
I mean, can we not require them to put a giant sign up out front that says this property is restricted? I mean...
That'll work.
Well, you know, and what you're looking at, I mean, typically a zoning is a comprehensive plan. And that's the reason it passes constitutional muster, because everyone is equally, everybody's treated equally. You're not treating one property owner different from another. So the comprehensive aspect is what is at the root of zoning law. And traditionally, when we rezone property, typically there's something next to it, another B2 next to it. So as the community is evolving historically, you're seeing these districts expand, you're seeing residential areas increase. So they can, you know, if we're having a housing boom, for example, we can, you know, and people in R1 want to, you know, B2 next to it, say, "Look, we want to rezone that to R1." Well, we see it's expanding, so we do that. And that's kind of historically what we do as far as rezoning goes. Now, when you take a situation like these individuals want, you know, they're in a R1 and they want to go to a B2, and the restrict, and you love these restrictions on there because I think everybody, I think everybody, you know, feels for them. I mean, what they're trying to do, I think everybody at the Planning Commission thought was a great idea. But the practical aspect is what's going to happen in the future? When Joe Blow comes and says, "Well, I want the same favors that they were given," and his Pandora's Box opens, and then all of a sudden, are we treating everyone equally? Are we abiding by this constitutional standard for a comprehensive plan? And that's the troubling aspect. And that's what's, I mean, I could go further in this because there's something called spot zoning. Spot zoning is when you create a B2 in the middle of a, of a R1 residential area. And courts have declared that's unconstitutional, that's unconstitutional in Alabama. Now, that's one reason that we require the four acres. It gives that, because spot zoning is looked at from different angles, and it's the size of the property is one element of spot zoning. But also is, does the council, when they rezoned, did they have a rational, reasonable, reasonable rational basis for doing this? And sometimes, like in Mobile, they had a spot zoning situation, and exactly the arguments you were making about economic development, things have changed. And courts went both ways on that. So, I mean, they just have to be very, very careful about the reasons you want to do the rezoning in this situation and the precedents that you're going to set. Because exactly, you've got to look at, are we opening Pandora's Box?
Question for Lee, is the, gosh, there's so many moving parts to this, and I'm trying to wrap my, you know, I'm voting, I've already voted 10 different ways 20 times, okay? So I'm sitting up here trying to play this out. Is the problem that we don't have a system that we can tag this addendum, and so therefore somebody's got to remember it? I mean, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, that's a, kind of a systemic problem with any big industry or government. But the thing is, are we going to get in the business of doing this?
Yeah, that's the second problem.
Is that what we're going to do? Are we going to create a, you know, a separate bank of land where we're getting the business of helping people get through zoning laws by joining in on a subdivision?
And then I guess my second question is, I'm assuming you were at the Planning Commission meeting?
I was at one of them. I got called in.
Okay. I just, I know so far, I sit up here and I see that we rely on Brian Harbison. He goes out and does all this work, and we typically, I see that we vote in concert with Brian's recommendations. Is it a fair analogy to compare Brian Harbison's office to the Planning Commission? I mean, I'm just asking.
What's up to you?
I'm new, okay?
Okay. What's up to you? With Brian Harbison, y'all tend to trust him, which I, but anyway. But no, Brian's been doing this for 30 years, and he's, and basically what he's looking at is building codes and nuisance violations. And, you know, and he is one part of the puzzle. He brings you the experience and he shows you, you know, pictures and tells you how long it's, that kind of thing. And y'all have the hearing and you decide. The Planning Commission is individuals from the community that are part of this board, and it gives you input from different individuals in the community as to what their opinion is.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, it's not something that's binding. It's something for you to consider.
So it's not really apples to apples. It might be apples to oranges, you know, comparing Brian's office to the Planning Commission. I just see there's a certain way that we do business, and I'm just trying to understand that, and...
Well, Brian's paid to do what he does.
Sure.
And the board, I don't think is.
But they receive technical support from Tina, though, and she provides quite adequate technical support. So I can tell you, just to help with that, the answer to that question is that when we transition from the rule of allowing the people who do this every day driving the decision making to the seven up here driving that decision, I'm moving. I'm getting out of town when that starts happening. So we, I really want to depend on them very heavily because they're doing it every day. And they provide us with that, that technical knowledge and that technical understanding, and then we make decisions based on that.
And you're referring to Tina or the Planning Commission?
I'm referring to Tina and her technical understanding of zoning laws, and I'm also referring to Brian Harbison and the role that he plays with that process. So his, his role, her role, and everybody that works every day at City Hall, their input is valuable. And I don't want to, I don't want to realize, wake up and realize a life without it.
Oh, I agree. And that gives me a good explanation of the Planning Commission versus Brian's office thing.
Lee, your position, just to be clear, I mean, obviously we have processes in place for rezoning properties. I mean, obviously the city council has some level of responsibility in being able to make those decisions, but the concern here is that typically those rezonings are done in larger blocks as part of a comprehensive master plan, not so much on an a la carte basis, and that if we were to make that decision here today on an a la carte basis, that it would in fact open up the city council to some accusation of not treating everyone equally and dealing with something specifically. Is that...
I'm saying it could, not saying it would.
Right, sure.
Could, but I mean, you know, this council is the one that adopted the comprehensive plan.
Right.
And if I wasn't here then, but I would imagine there was some service, usually it's East Alabama.
Regional Planning Commission.
Yeah, Planning Commission would come in and they kind of, you know, they're paid to do a survey and kind of give the council at that time an idea of what they think would be appropriate at that time and...
Any idea when the last one of those surveys was completed?
No idea.
In this community?
No.
Okay. I completely endorse the concept of a master plan and following that master plan by the city. My argument is, that's the way we always done it, is never going to be a good argument for me. And I think that it's probably been a few decades since those zones were revisited by any one of those agencies.
I imagine you are correct.
Thank you. Seven, eight.
I think that when you look at this particular property, I just can't get past the fact that there's a service station right across the street, there's an active fire station right next door, there's a working mountain bike trail system that the city's developing right across the street. It's an unfortunate situation all the way around. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who want to speak in favor?
Yes, Madam President.
Your name and address.
David Lawson, 241 Kenwood Circle. Yes, I'm in favor of this project. The reason you see Pandora's Box, that if you open it and all kinds of things are going to pop out that you can't control, the Pandora's Box is lack of vision down the road. Now, I've lived here for 13 years, and I've seen the circumstances that you speak of, R1, B1, B2, B3. I'm going to take South 11th Street as a prime example. Now, you've had houses that have existed there for years. Then one small business opens up, maybe five houses down. All right, another six houses, another business opens up. You do have two gas stations there on South 11th Street. You have a very successful business in the carpeting and flooring industry. And you also built a gigantic school that, to my opinion, in the area that it's in, it's like putting a pig in a sewer hole. Now, you're on a different side of town, and you want to deny these people the opportunity to go into what we call small business, which is not the future of this entire country, but the present right here. And the last thing I checked on the map is that Gadsden is part of the general country. And when you have been speaking over the past three, four years about how the population is in steady decline, how there aren't other tax revenue opportunities in the realm of small business, well, this is it. This is small business. It's one small business today. It might be five small businesses next month. Take the pluses where you can get them. You hold the future of this city in your hands. Yes, you all live here too, but the areas that you live in is pretty much set. It can't stay that way but for so long. The way things are going in economics isn't big. It's going to the small. And the prime opportunities for small businesses are your rural enclaves. And it's not like they are opening up the door to the six, seven, eight, 10 gas stations that Councilman is afraid of, the motorcycle shops. Not that there's anything wrong with that. And as has already been pointed out, you already have that in the area where they're looking to set up. But at some point, the no's, that ends up being a death sentence to business development. And you are putting yourselves in a position where you'll have to address the disparity, as I pointed out, areas like South 11th Street, areas like Tuscaloosa Avenue, where you have a mixture of homes and any kind of businesses that open up. And you just bang the gavel, you give the approval, and people in those situations are somewhat powerless to really fight it because they don't have the personal economics. Whereas the areas that you're speaking of, all kinds of people with all kinds of money can come down here and say, "No, we don't want this." And you're shooting off not just your left, but also your bright big toe. So I'm in favor of it because this city needs small business development. That's your Pandora's Box.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? This ordinance has been, okay, all right. Your name and address.
My name is Cindy Nagashima, and I, my husband and I are the ones that are trying to rezone. I live at 233 Hines Road. I just wanted to say a few things. I really appreciate the words that you said, they were wonderful. I agree about the small business, trying to bring more economic to our town. If we were allowed to have the venue, think of all the money that it would bring and all the people that it would bring to town. When you get married, you have to have a place to stay, right? Your guests are coming to town, most of the time you have a wedding, you have family that comes out of town. They're going to come here and they're going to want to stay in our hotels. They're going to come here and they want to go out to eat, out to dinner, to celebrate the wedding. They're going to want to come while they're here, they're going to want to go look at Knockaluna Falls because it's a beautiful place. That's also going to in turn give jobs to a photographer. Somebody's going to want to take pictures at the wedding. Somebody might want a caterer. We're going to have to have somebody prepare the food. There might be different, other things, you know, music, whatever. It's going to bring a lot of different opportunities to Gadsden. If you approve it, it's not just going to improve our, our income and our lives, it's going to improve other people's businesses as well.
Okay.
Ms. Nagashima, can I?
I'm sorry, Councilman, go ahead.
I understand y'all had a petition signed. How many people signed the petition?
The petition that was signed is from the people in our area that live right in our neighborhood. Our attorney has our book of what our property looked like before and what it looks like now. I think there's 62 on the current petition. We turned one in to the city council and they kept it. I think there was 52 or 54 on it. We have gotten numerous people that just drive by and stop, because my husband and I are always outside working. We're always cleaning up something, you know, there's a lot of work to be done there, making the property look better. We have so many neighbors that would stop by, "So what are y'all doing? It looks great." Yes, you have our support. As far as some of the things that the opposition had stated, there is a green space on the backside of our property that goes down Lookout Street. That green space is going to stay a green space. So there'll be a barrier between Hines Road and Lookout Street. There should never even be anybody looking for a venue on Lookout Street unless they get lost. It's one turn off of Knockaluna Road, down Hines Road, there it is on the right. it is, on the right. So, as far as increasing traffic down that way, I never would.
Um, Ms. Nagashima, I have a, a specific question. As part of your business model here as an event venue, how many events do you target? How many, how many events do you need to host to make this worth your time? I mean, or how many do you project? I mean, theoretically, obviously, you're not having weddings in the middle of December, I imagine.
Right, right.
You know, what, what is the, what is the seasonality and what is the total number of events that you anticipate?
Well, we're going to be a small venue, because as it's been brought up, there's nine acres. So, um, we want to keep the intimacy, the, the, um, I don't know how to say that, we want to keep the integrity of the property. So, we don't want to be a big venue. We want to be 75 people or less. Prime wedding season is, what, May to September? So, um, you know, I'd love it if it could be every weekend.
Sure, sure.
But, um.
So, I mean, we're talking 15, 15 events maybe a year?
That would be wonderful. I, I would love for that, for it to be that. Um.
That's another point I think needs to be considered here. I mean, we're not talking about a business that's open from nine to five every day.
No.
Monday through Friday. I mean, these are special events.
A, and, and we want to be able to, uh, open up our venue to, um, people that could want to come in and you pick. Uh, everybody loves musketeons, right? I do. Um, I do have a book, if anybody wanted to look at it. It's the Before and After Pictures, When We Bought Our Property, and I'm not exaggerating, the grass is up to here. Um, there was nothing kept about the property at all. Um, we've done a lot, a lot of work on, on it. If anyone wants to look at it. Um, but, um, as I said, we're there near about every weekend, working on the property and landscaping and just improving it, the eye appeal.
I see.
Like, and the, the, um, there's letters of reference in there from, uh, neighbors. There's letter, or there's, the petition is in the back. Um, yes.
You, you mentioned 52 or 62 neighbors that are in favor. Do you have a number of neighbors that are not in favor?
Two that I know of, one that is here, and one that is his neighbor.
Okay.
Address something?
Come on.
It's not up to me.
I know of at least several of the initial petition, which was the 52 that she spoke of, where, when the people were approached, it was with venue, I was, love it, it's a wedding venue, my neighbor, one of them. So, I don't know how many there are, but there are some.
All right, thank you.
We cannot misinterpret or we cannot misrepresent ourselves on any of those, on the neighbor that they signed it.
Is there anyone else who want to speak in favor? Your name and address.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Heather New. I'm the president of the chamber. Our address is 1 Commerce Square, Gaston 35901. Um, I want to express to the council, uh, your, my appreciation for you considering the rezoning. I realize precedent is a really difficult thing to deal with. Um, I have visited the property, I've met with the Nagashimas a couple of times. Uh, the improvements that they've made, as you can see in that book, are significant and impressive. I know that you have to consider the full city and not just one property. I do think one thing, um, that could be really beneficial to the city and to the council as you consider this, is the proximity of this property to city-owned property, and how that can actually increase and enhance what the city is already doing at Nakalula Falls. I can tell you that we field daily, you know, 25 to 50 calls during, especially during your Christmas season, during your peak season and, and the summer, uh, for calls about Nakalula Falls, things to do in the area around Nakalula Falls. I think this will just add to, um, the amenities that are already there that you've invested in. So, I appreciate your consideration.
There was a mention earlier of a city, a, a community swimming pool, I think, in, in the area. Is, is that owned by the community, owned by the city? Does, do you know?
It's privately owned and it backs up our property. It is owned R1 as well.
I was about to ask, what's the zoning of that community pool?
It's R1, and so it is Nakalula Falls Trail, and their campgrounds, their cabins, their wedding venue is all R1.
Okay.
This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Our next public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. This is the Gaston Burritos LLC doing business as Hot Head Burritos, located at 101 East Broad Street in District 4, has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this or, this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Madam President, I make a motion, we adopt the resolution issuing alcoholic beverage license.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license for 15 LLC doing business, that's Blue, located at 538 Broad Street. This is Suite C in District 5, and they've applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution to issue this entirely new, not transferred license.
Second.
Is there any discussion? That was an inside joke that only the people at pre-council understand. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution approving an issuance of an alcoholic beverage license at, uh, K-Tai Thai Cuisine LLC doing business as Katie Thai, located at 102 Elbow Street, Suite D in District 7. They have applied for a retail beer and table wine license on or off premises. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Mayor, turn it on.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Resolution authorizing extension of a special use permit to Sprint, and this is for an extension of the permit authorized by Resolution Number R265-18 on July the 2nd, 2018, to allow the equipment modification to the existing wireless communication facility that's located at 748 Forest Avenue. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Resolution authorizing agreement with CDG Engineers and Associates Engine, Inc., and this is for performance of a pavement evaluation on all city streets, and the amount is $164,900. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
No.
Oops. No. We have one no, motion carries to adopt.
There is no new business. Department reports, committees, boards. Remarks by the mayor and council. Councilman Reed.
I don't think I have to say, uh, on Bob Echols. I served with him for over 20 years. Um, I rarely ever disagreed with him. When we did, we pretty well settled it on the side. Uh, I always respected his opinions, but today, we lost one of our, our own, no doubt. Uh, he, he, number one, was a friend, every one of us, but he was a leader, as was obvious. You know that, Derek, every, oh, and everybody on this council knows it. But more than anything else, he was a statesman. And that's something this country has run out of, good, solid statesmen to represent us. I just want him to know it, and I'm going to miss him a lot.
Thank you.
Councilman Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that Mr. Echols was a southern gentleman. Me and my wife was talking about that the other day. Me and Mr. Echols had lunch, maybe three or four months ago, together down at Pruitt's, and we talked a lot. He told me how he was going to miss being on this city council, but he said his, he knew his time was, was up, and he needed, that somebody else needed to take charge. He was going to care for his wife Betty, take care of her. And I just pray for the family today, because I know they're going through a, a loss. But he was a good gentleman, Mr. Echols was.
Councilman Wilson.
No comments, thank you.
Councilman Bass.
It is kind of a, an odd day. Uh, first day we've had a city council meeting in over 32 years that Bob Echols wasn't up here. Uh, after my election on August 28th, I started bringing Bob to the council, and he invited me to do that, said he could drive, he just didn't like to drive. So, it gave me time to spend some really quality time with, uh, everything that Ben Reed just said, not, not to repeat, but statesman and honorable and, uh, you know, I wish I could have had a lot more time with him. He had a lot more wisdom to impart, uh, but it was, it was God's appointed time. And so, I'll, I'll cherish those days. And, you know, you can't take Bob Echols' place, nobody can replace him. I'm not going to try to do that. Uh, I'm, I'm going to honor his memory. Uh, I'm, I'm my own person, I'll, I'll make my own choices. Uh, bear with me as I make mistakes, as we go through this process together, because that's what we do, as a council and as a city, is that I think we do things together. Don't always agree. Like Ben said, he didn't always agree with, uh, Bob, but I think there's a way to do that respectfully and still walk out of this, uh, council chambers as, as friends and, and coworkers. And, uh, did get to spend time with Bob, uh, Monday mo, uh, yesterday morning, and with Betty and, uh, with Nancy and Ann, who I've known all my life, grew up with them, uh, and it was a, it was a real special time. Bob was ready, Bob was ready to go to heaven, and, uh, it, it was just a, uh, you know, sweet time, as I've commented to Donna Thornton in the Gaston Times. So, keep Betty and the girls in your prayers as they go through these, navigate these waters. Uh, it's a difficult time when you lose a loved one. And Bob was the leader and the patriarch of that family in a real special way. And our city will remember him, I think, in a real special way and, and honor him as, as days go on. I know this panel, this council rather served with him a lot longer than I have served with him. Obviously, didn't serve with him, but, uh, he's just a great guy, and, uh, I think we all should just be thankful that, that God chose to place him in Gaston. That's all.
Councilman, where are they?
Like just said, we're going to miss Mr. Echols and praying for his family, his wife, and just keep him in your thoughts and prayers. And also, I ask you to pray for one of our basketball officials. He was calling ball last night and had a heart attack on the floor, so, uh, but he's doing much better today. So, just, uh, keep him in your prayers. Thank you.
Councilman, will you?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I think there's a group of, uh, individuals that have come to the council meeting today in honor of Mr. Echols. Could you acknowledge or raise your hand, a handful of the folks? Thank you, folks, for coming out. We do appreciate that. Um, again, not to rehash what's already been said. Mr. Echols was an, was an outstanding man. Um, and I've, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, there are, there are people in our society that we need to exist. Um, we, we need them here, and, uh, Mr. Echols was one of those people. Uh, there, there's, you know, obviously, there, there are folks that, you know, we could, we could do with or without. But Mr. Echols was not one of those people. He, he definitely fit that category of people that society needed to exist. And to echo Councilman Reed's point about him being a statesman, um, Mr. Echols was 91 years old, and, uh, 90 years old. And, um, in, in a lot of his terminology and his dialect could, could be dated, um, because he'd been around so long and had to absorb so much. But you knew his heart, so you didn't get offended when he said certain things, because you knew his heart. And when he realized that he had said something offensive, he was very quick to apologize. That's the kind of person he was. And I, you know, you don't have to be perfect when people know your heart. And Mr. Echols was that kind of person. He, he was very much a, a true statement, statesman. He cared for the city, and he represents a model that I try to follow, and that I, you know, again, I, I share Councilman Reed's fear, that we are slowly losing that style and that type of elected official in this country. Uh, Alabama in particular is at a deficit. But, uh, as, as a nation, we're losing that type of elected official. And it's, uh, it's scary for, for somebody at my age who feels like I've got to, I've got to live it for a while. But, uh, we're going to miss Mr. Echols. And, uh, to Kent's point earlier, I, I hope that we, um, honor and acknowledge him at the highest level, um, as, uh, as his family goes through this difficult time. And let's continue to pray for his family.
Mayor.
Uh, yes, Bob was, uh, the voice of reason for this group up here. Uh, just about any of us, I would assume, I know I always did, if we had something we wanted to try to do, whatever, we'd run it by Bob and see what he thought. Uh, he was on board, pretty much everybody else was on board. Uh, he had a heart bigger than gold, especially for the kids and the education. Uh, he really always had that first and foremost on his mind about what can we do to help the kids and family success center and, and all the different things he was involved with. And, uh, he, uh, something you probably might not think about, he was one of the toughest guys I've ever been around, because he's been in bad health for a long time, when I got here before. And he would come up here sometime, and we would maybe not know if we were going to see him the next day. And then he'd be back. But he, he was a real, and he never complained, he never complained. He was a good person, uh, he was a good friend, and he, uh, he was a, a strong man, I have to tell you.
Okay, thank you. Just to add to what the mayor said, as far as the, it, I know, uh, Councilman Echols from the educational part. Uh, he was very supportive of Donahue and Yar Brown, those were his two schools. And it was nothing for him to, a lot of people didn't know it, but it was nothing for him to give money. In fact, there's a playground, when, uh, the playground equipment was burned, uh, he was instrumental in getting playground equipment for the pre-K. So, um, we're going to miss him. Uh, I'm definitely going to miss him, sitting by him. We worked, I worked with him, but sitting by him for four years, uh, I definitely will miss him. Uh, the last thing that I would like to say is that I want to, for us to continuously to create an, uh, experience for citizens to participate in municipal government, because when you participate, you become more informed. So, what we've done is establish committee meetings that will start in January. There, we have several different, uh, committees. And this will be an opportunity for citizens to come to the various committees. If you have a concern for public work, if you have a concern that has to do with public safety, then you'll have an opportunity to come and to be informed. That's what goes on within the city government, as well as to voice your concern and even give suggestions. And also, there is, uh, we did this last year, but on the web, there's an application for city boards and city commission membership. Doesn't mean that you'll get appointed to one, but the council would just like to know the people that are interested in the different boards that we have. On the website, you can find the list of the different boards that are pertaining to the city, and this is an application to fill out for your interest. So, I just encourage citizens to know what's going on, come and be informed, so that you will know and not go by hearsay. But we appreciate you for coming, we appreciate you for supporting the city council. the city council and we, as the members of this council, will continue to work for the betterment of this council. Is there anything else than I'll ask for a joint man?
I will.